Good evening, everybody. Last minute instructions for the mayor. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to July council meeting. A little unique tonight, we have in person and we have a city councilman that is zooming in tonight from his summer vacation spot of Honolulu or wherever ever it went, I'm not sure what, but we welcome everybody tonight. And acknowledge that Mr. Green is on Zoom. Mr. Green, I will be asking for your vote singly every time we have one to make sure that we
Okay, sir.
We make sure we get your vote, okay? As our custom.
Thank you, sir.
You got it. As our custom, we always open up our meetings with an invocation. And I ask Councilman Bradley if he would do that, do us a dollar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Having thought of a great opportunity to come together and do the city's business, we ask guidance and direction in our thoughts and decisions. We thank you for the safety of our city. Would we just offer prayers for those in Florida who are dealing with collapse and other disasters throughout the world? Keep us safe. We promise give you praise. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Bradley. Everybody here is very special to us. And thank you for coming. And we ask that we have respect and for everybody that's speaking and acknowledge that that they have the right to speak. And so just wanted to say that to begin with. We are honored tonight in a special way to have a guest tonight. Our distinguished football coach at Eastern High School. And I am going to ask Mr. Bradley to call Mr. Kirby up and honor him tonight. And the reason I ask Mr. Bradley, Tim is a Mevenite in true sense of born here. 1973 graduate, played on the state championship team against Pisgah, I believe how you say it, for state championship in 1971. Probably before some of y'all were born, but that's another story. Mr. Bradley?
That'll actually be runner-up.
I was gonna leave that over before.
You're not called Pisgah Bear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, would you let's come up to the front? You know, while we're walking up, John was recently recognized by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association and given the Toby Webb Outstanding Coach Awards. One of the things that makes this award significant, y'all come on up a little bit further. One of the things that makes this accolade significant is giving one male or one female coach each year. I think the last time a coach from Alaman County won was 10 years ago, John Moon. But it's given not only further success in athletics, which Eastern's had a very successful football program under Coach Kirby, but it's also given in respect to the dealings the coach has in promoting and pushing their athletes forward, not only academically, but professionally. John has spent 35 years in Eastern, 36?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six years in Eastern. He's been head coach 30 years since 1991. And I wrote some of these statistics down because they're pretty impressive. His football team that won over 250 games, eight conference championships, 20 appearances in the state playoffs, and twice finishes the state runner-up for like our 1971 team who went to Pisgah, played for the state championship. He also has served on a couple of our boards and commissions, our park and recreation commission. He also served on the, is this the Corrigan, is that the way you pronounce it? Corrigan Fairclaw National Football Foundation, which grants scholarships academies to students based on academic records. He also has served as a wrestling coach and currently serves as the athletic director of Eastern and addition to football coach. The thing, the thing to me that makes it special about John is, number one, he's a Meven man. He grew up in Meven. I knew when he was really small. He played football here. He went to Eastern. His family, he's raised his family here. I think he took a break from one football game in 28 years to walk his dog around on homecoming nights. So I think the article said that the first time he missed a, or the first time he'd been able to see the halftime show in 28 years. He also coached his son JT, who that year they went, his senior, they went to the playoffs. So not only John, is John our football coach, a very successful coach in leagues athletics and athletes in Eastern High School. He's one of us. And we could give him the key to the city, but he already lives here and he is one of us. So John, we just wanted to formally, in front of everybody, let you know how proud we are that you're our coach.
Thank you.
How proud we are to have you and your family here and the respect the students have for you is tremendous in respect that we have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your services.
Can I get to say something?
Yes, sir. Next year, we gonna get it.
You know, I look around, Mr. Yarborough is here, and our young golfer was supposed to be here tonight. And I think that she's probably playing in a tournament. And I said something to Mr. Yarborough the other day, said you're gonna be at the town council on Monday night for Emily. I said, yeah, I'll be there, but I wasn't telling him that I was supposed to be here as well. But I thank you for coming. But when this young lady does come, guys, it's amazing how good she is. We went down and watched her play in the state championship round, and it was unbelievable. So when she comes, guys, don't ever go and go play golf with her because she'll make you look bad. But you know, Mr. Bradley said something about being local. Guys, he's a local guy. I'm a local. I was actually born in Martino's. Martino's in Meven used to be the Meven Medical Clinic. So we are true Mevenites in that we've been here since the beginning. And you know, I've been around a long time and you gotta appreciate that. Your family's gotta be the one that backs you and is behind you. But great people like Mr. Yarborough is our principal guy. We got a great leader at our school. And what you guys have done for the city of Meven and what you guys do for us, we very much appreciate it. But the award is very humbling. It's very honoring. But the thing is, you surround yourself with great people and great things happen. So thank you for your support. Thank you. We've actually got football camp going on at school right now. And so we're gonna sneak out the back door and head back ourselves. But thank you so much for all that you guys do.
Thank you.
You know, when you say something about a tower, we're like, what are they talking about? And I guess we don't get the paper read enough and stuff. So good luck. And Mr. Yarborough, thanks. Aaron, thanks. Guys, got a great one in there here. Great things are going. You gonna say anything?
I'm good.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
Yeah, John mentioned the young lady, Emily, and she was supposed to be here tonight because she is at a tournament. And we moved it to August. If she can't come in August, we're gonna do it in September. We're gonna make sure that we honor her. And she was a tremendous athlete. But again, thank you, John. Thank you. Mr. Yarborough, thank you. All right, let's start the agenda tonight. We're opening up with public comments. And our first speaker is Matt Dale.
My name is Matt Dale, and I live at 505 West Chester Drive in Greensboro, North Carolina. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, city of Meven staff, and citizens of Meven. My name is Matt Dale, and I am the branch manager at the Meven Public Library. I am here tonight to share with you two exciting recent developments at the Meven Public Library. The first is the decision by the Alaman County Public Library to go fine-free effective July 1st, 2021. This means that the Alaman County Public Library, which includes the Meven Public Library, will no longer charge fines for overdue materials and has granted retroactive amnesty, eliminating all outstanding overdue fines on patron accounts. If patrons lose library materials, they will still be charged replacement costs for the lost items, but there will no longer be overdue fines charged by the Meven Public Library. The second development that I'd like to share with you this evening is the restoration of the Meven Public Library's hours of operation to our pre-COVID schedule. Once again, we are open Monday and Tuesday from 9:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., Wednesday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the following city of Meven staff for being excellent ambassadors from the city of Meven to the Meven Public Library. Eduardo Mendoza, Building Maintenance Coordinator, Chuck Smith, Public Works Director, and Preston Mitchell, Assistant City Manager. They have been extremely receptive, professional, kind, and wonderful to work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, and welcome to Meven.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. That's all. We did have a speaker. I'm sorry.
Public comment submitted through email. My name is Christie Watson. I am a resident of Meven and a teacher in Orange County Schools. My family and I are currently traveling, but I wanted to submit input for the development of a cell phone tower in North Meven. My parents live near Mill Creek, and their cell phone service is unreliable at best. Sometimes I dial them only to have their phones go straight to voicemail. They will not even receive a notification that a call. Often, we will be talking and the call will drop without warning. This lack of service is a growing cause of concern as my parents age. They are both already well into their seniors. And I'm worried that they will be unable to reach out for emergency help when they need it. Furthermore, as the child of two working parents, my daughter routinely stays with them. This adds to my fear that their cell phones may prove useless should something go wrong. Remote learning was certainly difficult when my daughter worked from a parents' home due to their insufficient home line access. As society grows increasingly dependent upon cellular service, the lack of it is more than a mere inconvenience. It is a matter of public safety. Please help protect and serve the residents of North Meven through construction of a cellular tower. Thank you for your time and all for your efforts on behalf of our community.
Mayor, members of the council, because that is going to be a later quasi-judicial hearing, you will not be able to consider that letter, but it was submitted as a public comment, so it was read. The quasi-judicial rules say that someone who speaks must be subject to cross-examination, so I'll drop that out.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Stephanie. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. The first item is the approval of minutes June 7th, 2021 regular meeting. The Recreation Program Scholarship Policies. The Recreation Trails Grant Application, the Records Retention Policy, the Purchase Police Capital with Federal Accrival Funds, Final Plot Reapproval Bowman Village in One, Resolution Finance and Proposable for Vehicles and Apparatus, and New Job Descriptions. Does anybody on the council have any comment or any discussion about any of these items?
I have just one question. Oh, sure, Aaron. Please. The Trail Grant Application, Flay Michael, is that trail gonna be on private property anywhere or is it gonna totally be on city property?
It'll be completely on city property as it is proposed at this time.
Well, that's what it looks like on the maps. How close does it come to any houses in that area?
There's one portion that crosses a little land bridge, and there's two homes that it gets pretty close to.
Will we plant any fielding or legal enclosures or anything?
I think that would be part of the discussion as we would get further into the planning process. This item is just to allow us to apply for the grant, and then we can determine to move forward with the grant if we awarded the grant.
Well, I had a letter from one of the homeowners in the area, and that was a concern as it moves forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I did have a quick question for the police chief. Chief Caldwell, I see that you're getting a Dodge Ram 1500, and it's replacing a Honda Civic. And I'm just kind of curious about that because those are not Bigfoot one vehicles.
Mayor Hudson, members of the council, it's a good question, Ms. Phillips. If you all allow me to digress, I'm going to have Lieutenant Richardson over at Support Services give an explanation to that.
So the vehicle that we're replacing is a vehicle that is assigned within Life Narcotics. So this just can be utilized in many different ways. And it's much better served having that vehicle versus the one that we're taking offline now. It's roughly 140,000 miles.
It's simply a matter of the existing vehicle's no longer usable?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion? So move. We got a motion. You have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Green, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Green. All right, it moves into public hearing. Our first public hearing is a quasi-judicial special use permit for a cell tower on Landy Lane. Mr. Stobart?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a reminder, Mr. Brown, we require further commentary on this, but all individuals, including myself, that wish to speak and present on this matter must be sworn in by the city clerk.
Okay. At this time, if you're planning to speak, come forward and be sworn in.
We got to over, flip forward, make it sound spooky. You could either swear or affirm. If you are swearing, if you'll find a place where you can lay your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand.
We got one right here.
Lay your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony? You're about to prove the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
Mayor, members of the council, before we begin, I also want to bring your attention to how the item is listed, both on the agenda items summary and on your agenda as being a board of adjustment matter. Mr. Brown and I reviewed the text and the standards for this item, and it explicitly designates the council as being the body responsible for issuing a special use permit for towers that do not meet the required setbacks as identified in the Meven UDO. The, I apologize for the error, the item was still advertised as required by law for a special use quasi-judicial public hearing, and the requirement for sworn testimony was included in that advertisement to the public. So before you this evening is a special use request for a wireless telecommunications facility for the purposes of our conversation this evening. A 5G or cell tower may be an appropriate way to refer to it, a little less cumbersome. We do have general statutes that specifically give us certain powers to regulate these entities, and they are referred to in the statute as wireless communication facilities, hence that language. It is on a property on Landy Lane, just under two acres, 1.78 acres. It's owned R20 as are all neighboring properties. It is located in the critical area of the water supply watershed. It is a permitted use as a special use in the water supply watershed. Thank you, sir. As noted, you can see the teal or bright blue dot in the northern section of the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. This property is not located within the city limits. It is in our ETJ on Landy Lane. As noted, it is in the watershed. It is currently an unused property. It is vacant. It does have a stream crossing through it, and the site is proposed south of the stream. The stream crossing would be involved, as is shown on packets. The property may be developed by right for single-family residential uses. Otherwise, it is in, because it is in the critical area of the watershed, it is in conservation area, all the critical areas included in the conservation area of the comprehensive land development plan Meven by Design. Otherwise, it is in a secondary growth area, which is reserved for, or the guidance that's provided in the comprehensive plan is for primarily residential use as well as uses that support residential needs largely retail. So the Meven UDO requires, allows for cell towers by right, provided they meet the development standards of the UDO. The proposed use that you had before you does not meet the required setbacks from residential property lines, and as such, is required to come before the city council for a special use permit. There's also language that allows by right all towers under 75 feet in height, and then has additional standards that are, that must be met for towers of this height, which will be in the end just under 200 feet. Just a reminder, the special use criteria, it's been a minute since we've brought one to the city council or the board of adjustment. There are four criteria established by general statute that a request must meet. One is that they will be, it will be in harmony with the surrounding zoning. A wireless communication facility is allowed on all zones, zoning districts in the city as a special use for, provided it meets the development standards. Again, this is largely dictated by statute and is reflected in our ordinance. It must be consistent with the goals and objectives of our comprehensive land development plan Meven by Design. It will not injure the property values of adjoining properties, and it does not present a safety or welfare concern for the surrounding properties. With that, I will turn over to a representative of the applicant and to speak more about their request.
Evening. This one right here. Got it. My name is Tom Johnson. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Williams Mullen at 301 Fayette Street, Suite 1700 in Raleigh. Here on behalf of the applicant, Towercom, who is building this tower for the benefit of Verizon and Dish, whose Dish is a new carrier in the market. You've known for their, for the satellite TV, but they are also going to be a wireless carrier in the market. I mean, this tower will cover, it's not just limited to 5G, it's 4G, 3G, to some degree that the 3G still exists. 2G is gone. So basically, it will cover all that spectrum and all those things. And all 5G does is it's just got a more frequency so that it doesn't carry as far, but does perform more consistently for those devices and for those, for data and for, say, driverless cars or things of that nature because it provides a more consistent signal. So that's what the difference is, as the technology has moved. But before I get started, I do want to introduce kind of my team that's here tonight. Some of them will speak, some will be available for questions, but if I could introduce them. I've got George Davis right here with Towercom. He's vice president with Towercom. Michael Berkowitz, he's our praiser. He did the impact study that was in your packet that you received. We've got Robert Clement with Towercom as well. We've got Jeremy Wooster, who's the engineer on the project with Tower Engineering Professionals. And then Ms. Nelson is right behind them right here, and she is the owner and property that is leasing it to Towercom for this site. And I do want to say, we've been through this with the technical review committee, and they've been great to work with. We've narrowed it down. We've gotten all the requirements met. We know we had to have the setback waiver because of just the configuration of this site. There's a stream that runs through it, which makes it a bit of a challenge to get that in. But we've got a certification via false-in letter from an engineer that if there were to be some reason that the tower would fall, which would have to be catastrophic, it would stay on-site. Because these towers are built for the wind and ice loading for the area in which they're located under the state building code. So they meet those requirements to prevent anything from happening. But this is a descending map. You just, side just showed this generally. It's just a different kind of map than this one that shows generally where it is. This is an area of the location on Landy Lane. Just to give you an idea, it's an undeveloped piece of property. You can see kind of that dot, as the light blue dot that's there is where approximately the tower will be located. It is located, there's a stream that crosses a property. We will have to cross the stream, but we've already gotten Corps of Engineers approval for that. So we've already got a permit for that. Want to give you an idea of coverage. This area just is lacking in basic coverage. And these sites do two things. They provide basic coverage to folks who need it, or it's a capacity site, and that is as the site gets busier, it starts losing the capacity it has to handle the calls, and calls will be dropped and things of that nature, just like it is when you don't have any coverage. And this site is going to serve kind of both of those roles. One, it does need basic coverage up here because you can see the place that's white in the middle here. The green are all the existing towers, and the yellow is a little weaker signal from those towers. But if you see kind of the blank area, that's the areas that we're trying to cover. And right here, you'll see just the bottom left. I'll go back and forth, light blue there. There's without Verizon's current coverage, which is very weak. You want to have the green in order to get the good signal. And there it is with the site. So it gives you an idea about what the change that will occur. But when I say capacity, there is a site in downtown Meven that is reaching capacity. So this site's gonna kind of help offload some of that as well. So it's gonna serve that dual role. As it says here, the objective is to provide reliable continuous coverage to the north of Meven on Highway 119 and those surrounding areas. And currently, it's unreliable coverage, meaning calls drop, you don't get through. Mill Creek's out here, but also there are other residents out here. And the reason now that wireless is important is a couple of things. One, most of us, that's all we've got. I mean, not many people keep landlines anymore. They've got their wireless device, and so if they need to call 911 or somebody needs to get up with them, you need to have good reliable coverage to be able to do that. But the second thing, and with COVID, it really brought it into view, people are working from home. They need wireless coverage to do that. Either they get, you know, have somebody else provides internet coverage or wireless. And for a lot of folks, it's been wireless coverage in order to be able to do that. So that's why it becomes more important, and you need that stronger signal to be able to have reliable data coverage where you may be. And this is basically just Dish's coverage. Doesn't help a whole lot because Dish doesn't have any coverage. They're just looking to get on any tower they can to start their coverage in the area. This is the site plan. As you can see, we're having that setback waiver because we're a little closer to on the eastern side. Again, we've got a false-in letter in the file. We worked really hard on landscaping on this site to get that right. We did that and adjusted the entrance road to take care of that, submit your landscape requirements. So we went through about all of those technical requirements. And you can see the stream through the property right here. And this is just a closer up view of the compound. There will be antennas on the tower, and there will be ground equipment, which is basically the computer equipment that runs the tower and connects it to the network for the carriers. There'll be fiber optic cable that will come and go all the way up the tower to where the antennas are. And these will be like utility cabinets typically. Some still use shelters. So you may see shelters on occasion, but that's what they... But that's what those blocks are in this compound, is for that ground equipment. And this is a closer-up view of the landscape plan, in order to shield the tower site from the surrounding properties. Next, we did, as part of this photo simulation, just to give you an idea about what the tower will look like when it's put in, what it looks like now, what it'll look like when the tower goes up. And this is going to be a monopole tower, just a single pole with the antennas on it. This is a site map showing the locations where we took pictures to do the photo simulations, which you can show, it surrounds the whole site from the ways that you will see it, the major roads in the area. This is the first simulation. You see that the arrow there where that will be, you see the existing view on the top left, and then the arrow is where the tower is. And this was taken, obviously, in the winter where we didn't have good leaf coverage. It, of course, varies at the time of the year. Again, this is another photo simulation. Again, you can see the upper right where it looks like now, the larger picture with the arrow pointing to the tower itself. The interesting thing with photo simulations and how this works, there's a lot of infrastructure around. There are utility lines that have been here forever. And depending on how close or far away you are to the tower, it blends right in with the existing infrastructure that's already there. This is a little closer to the site. Again, you couldn't see there because of the trees. Again, another location. This is looking down Landy Lane, and you see the area there where the tower is. Again, obscured by, probably by trees at this location, but you've also got the power lines that already pre-exist. This is kind of northeast of the site on Howie, from Highway 119. Again, the tree's pretty much obscured from that location. This is an existing tower that's, George, it's further to the north, right?
No, this is in the business park down like where like the Lytle Distribution Facility off of Ralph Scott Parkway.
Oh, for Ralph Scott Parkway. So this is an existing tower, and this just gives you an idea. This is a TowerCom site and a built tower, and this gives you an idea of what it looks like with the growl road going into the site and the monopole tower. So I wanted to give you an idea of what that would look like. But that's what we're proposing. There've been a lot of concerns for dropped calls and poor service in this area, because they really just don't have it. And as MEBBAN grows, we need to be able to have that infrastructure in place to be able to serve the citizens of MEBBAN. This is in the ETJ, of course, but, and even as George has told me, when he started looking at the site, it was in the county, and then looking at this area to serve it. But now it's in the ETJ, so that's why we're before you here tonight, to provide that extra coverage as MEBBAN grows out in that direction and becomes more important with the improvements to Highway 119 going on in that area, to provide that better coverage. Now, I'm going to have Michael Berkowitz come up and just summarize his impact study that he had for the record, because, you know, we've got to meet those points. One of those is impact on adjoining property values. So I do want him to come up and talk about that a little bit and what his study showed. So, Michael, if you could come up and just share a little bit.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Michael Berkowitz. My address is 1100 Sundance Route, Concord, North Carolina. I've been a certified general appraiser for about 20 years now. Done working out of Mans County and all over the state. What I did for this impact study, there's two ways to determine whether a proposed item, external item impacts value. You can do it quantitative, quantitatively or qualitatively. In the quantitative analysis and the report that I provided, there were sales of those with a view of the houses, with a view of the cell tower, and those without a view of the cell tower. In fact, some of the examples I provided were the exact same model house in which the evidence did not support. There is, I have not seen any credible quantitative analysis that shows an impact of cell towers on residential property values, given this is a residential area. There were several examples there. I've seen many throughout the state in which there is no empirical evidence to support an adjustment. The second is, is the qualitative analysis. There's no way to make a 199-foot tower invisible. But the examples that you provided were all similar in that they were in a wooded area with it exposed above the tree level, where you could be able to see it. That in conjunction with the above-ground infrastructure in the area, it's my conclusion that the tower as proposed will not substantially injure the values of adjacent or abutting properties. Be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time.
I've also got the engineer here. I'm not going to call him up unless there are specific questions from an engineering perspective, so far as the design of the site and those sort of things, from the plans that were in your packet. So if you have any questions, I can certainly call him up for you to ask any particular questions about how these sites are designed and how it works. But Tower Engineering Professionals has been doing this a long time, and this is their expertise in terms of the design of towers. That's what they do. Again, I've got George Davis here and Robin Clement, both from TowerCom. And I've got Ms. Nelson here, if there are any questions of her in terms of the decision to lease the site to TowerCom, or if there's any concern about that. I know at the planning board meeting, I just want to proactively mention this. There were concerns mentioned about the health effects of this tower. And I just want to make sure, and I know Mr. Brown would do the same thing, remind you that under your ordinance, under state law, that is not a consideration for this board, because it's deemed safe, because it's licensed by the FCC and has to operate within safe limits under that. And that's incorporated into state law and your local ordinance and federal law as well. So that is not a consideration for this board. I do want to summarize, based upon the evidence that we have, got the four points that Si talked about. First of all, will not materially endanger the public health or safety. It does not, in reality, improve it, because it provides that coverage for folks to have access to communication when they need it in the event of an emergency. It will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. Mr. Berkowitz, an appraiser, provided that information by state law. That's the, you have to have an appraiser's testimony to talk about value in this situation and testify, which is why Mr. Berkowitz was here. It will be in harmony in the area which is located by state law, the presumption. It is harmonious exactly for the reasons that Si said, and that is, it's allowed as a special use throughout the city of MEBBAN. And when it's allowed as a special use, it's considered to be harmonious by presumption, by state law, and by case law, as it's been decided. Probably because this is infrastructure. I mean, it's infrastructure like water, sewer, power, and what used to be telephone landlines. I mean, this is infrastructure like anything else. Consistent with the objectives and goals and the city's adopted plans, the staff report went through that. It is consistent with those plans, and I would say primarily for the very reason that I just said. It's infrastructure to support the residences and the businesses in this area and give them that service that they need, just like in the day when electrical power. So, we meet the four points. I ask you to find in our favor that we meet those points and to issue the special use permit. I'm happy to answer any questions now. Any of my team is available to answer any questions you may have. Or if others want to speak, I certainly like to reserve time to be able to come back up here and address any questions or concerns that any of the public may have.
Does council have any questions, Mr. Johnson? Just a quick one. Which of the bands are we talking about, CDMA or GSM?
For Verizon, they're predominantly CDMA. Dish, George Davis can speak to that better than I, but I'll let him come up to it.
George Davis for TowerCom, 5611 NC Highway 55 in Durham. Both carriers use a myriad of different licensed frequencies. The low, mid, and high band frequencies from Verizon and Dish will be utilized, as you may have read. The last year, Dish was the make-weight in the Sprint T-Mobile merger. They were required to divest a bunch of those licenses and spectrum to Sprint from Sprint and T-Mobile. And so Dish is going to be using low, mid, and high for an O-RAN network, which will provide a true 5G from the day one they turn it on network, which will do a lot of different things. It's not likely that they're going to try to compete with Verizon on a voice network. However, they will be inheriting the 9 million boost subscribers that T-Mobile had, or Sprint T-Mobile had. So they will be providing voice network.
Could go back to my question. So 5G is not a CMA?
5G is, the G is just generation. So it's a millimeter wave. The bands that they're using, they're employing all those in 5G, deploying 5Gs. And it's not just the one band that they're going to be.
Yes, I'm asking you that.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a quick question about the setback waiver. This is a use by right in all districts, but you're requesting a waiver because of the setbacks. Could you please speak to the reduction in the setbacks and the reasoning for that?
Yeah, and George can speak because of the site location and choice, so he can speak to it.
Yes, ma'am. So when we did the signing on this one back in 2016, and when we first approached the Nelson family on that track there, it was not clear to us or evident that the property was divided into four. When you look at it on the map, it appears as one large tract on the elements record, or at least it did at the time. In working with Nelson and her sister Cheryl, we came to learn that the property had been put into four equal parts, split amongst the four children of the family when their father passed away. And the lots were equally divided. Her brother had the one on the corner close to Highway 119. He's deceased. Ms. Cheryl Nelson had the second one. The other brother, who's also deceased, had the third one. And Adelena Nelson, who was our property owner, had the fourth one. We first started working with them. And Ms. Cheryl lives in California in the Bay Area and moves residences. After working with her for some time, she thought it would be easier to work with her sister, and she had been keeping up with the property taxes. So in order to keep the harmony in the family, keep the taxes paid, they felt it would be best to work with her, because she was close to, you know, where she lives in Greensboro. So that's how we ended up there. So technically, the setback waiver to the property to the east is from a family member. That's her brother's heir's property. So, and as Tom mentioned, we have a false-in letter, which is very common practice when you have fall zones that are greater than what the tower height is or equal to the tower height, because these towers, even in catastrophic failure, they don't fall over like a tree would. They would bend in half like a straw, if you want to visualize that. So the fall zone letter makes it such that it would stay on the property, and that is signed off by a structural engineer licensed in St. North Carolina. And in most jurisdictions, almost in all jurisdictions for that matter, fall zone setbacks are often waived in lieu of the fall zone letter.
Okay, so it's a reduction to 80 feet on the eastern side?
Yes, ma'am.
And the property to the east is undeveloped?
Correct. And one of the reasons that the property was chosen instead of some of the other properties, a lot of these are owner-occupied properties, some are larger than others, with the residential setback and also the fact that you have a fairly decent stream cutting through the middle of all four properties. The highest and best use of these properties, to sound like a planner for a minute, which is my former life, they don't have a lot of higher and better uses outside of some limited residential on the front portion. The back portion is largely unusable, because most property owners would not be able or be willing to pay the cost to develop across the creek. So we are using the property on the rear side of the creek, which was a decision in conjunction with Si and the planning staff and land development to best meet the requirements of the ordinance as stated, with the exception of the fall zone setback, which we have the letter for. And again, the property that we're encroaching on with that would be a family member's property.
Thank you for addressing this.
No problem. Any other questions? Thank you.
What's the normal range of the extended coverage?
So that's always a tricky question. You can look on the map, that usually represents somewhere around a mile, but it is imperfect. Dish, for instance, when their network is fully built out, they don't want their sites to cover more than a half mile in any direction. But this will be a four-sector site, where a lot of times you see the cloverleaf effect. And this one will actually have a four-sector, so it's going to be covering north-south along 119. It's going to offload traffic from the water tank site in downtown MEBBAN, as well as the Hall River site. And so it'll help improve coverage not only up in the northern part of MEBBAN, around Landy Lane and Mill Creek and Highway 119, but it will also improve the coverage and capacity in downtown MEBBAN, because it will pick up some of that traffic. But it'll cover north, south, east, and west better than a lot of other sites, because it'll be a four-sector site.
So this will be increased bandwidth?
Correct.
Or still north?
Correct, correct. And the siding, it was an infill site. There's a site further north, and then, as I said, you have the sites in downtown. So the flexibility of where it fell along Highway 110, further north, further south, was very, very specific, because you're trying to basically split the difference. You move it too far north, and you have issues where it's not covering back to downtown and offloading the traffic as well. If you move it south, you also lose, moving down towards the park and towards actual Mill Creek, you lose elevation. Originally, Verizon wanted the site to be 250 feet. We moved it just slightly further north and got it to where we can convince them that it needed to be below 200. The biggest reason for that was that consideration for the neighbors, because anything above 200 feet, as you probably know, would require FAA lighting. This site will be unlit, so there will not be any lights on the tower for FAA. We do have FAA approval, Fish and Wildlife, and State Historic Preservation and Cultural Resources. So all those approvals are already in hand.
Which, picking up on what George just said, this has to go through the National Environmental Policy Act process or the NEPA process, if you've heard about it, just like government agencies do, because it's a license, it's a federally licensed project. So it has to go through environmental, state historic evaluation, fish and wildlife, Native American tribe review. I mean, all of that review has to happen in order for this site to be approved. So they go through a pretty extensive review. And as I said earlier, the Corps of Engineers has issued the permit to cross the creek. And then we've been working with staff and Mr. Brown. Because of this being a watershed, you know, we're going to be using basically all the impermeable on this lot, as far as what's permitted, without a waiver exception on that, which Ms. Brown's signing that, recognizing if she does anything else on there, she'd have to get, you know, a waiver from the city in order to be able to exceed that impermeable surface level. But we're staying below that. So I did want to make you aware of that, that we had negotiated that out. And that document has been complete to be circulated and signed. So I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have or any of my team.
What is your proposed period of time for the contract that you have with the property owner?
The lease is five years and then...
Five years.
George can speak to that, he's the one that did the lease.
We can't get into too many specifics, but it's five years with renewals, and we expect that the site will be there for 40 or 50 years or longer. And that's the way, the reason, the simple reason why leases are five years, it's not because they pull one up and then say, "Oh, that was a bad spot, take it down." It becomes a white elephant. The reason why they do them in five-year increments is because when the carrier is evaluated financially, they look at the cost, keep doing that. They evaluate the cost of building the site combined with their rent obligation over a period by capping it at five years over renewals, and allows them to keep that cumulative number lower so they can figure out what their ROI is on their site. So I know that's probably a more complicated answer than you expected, but we expect the site and our investment in the site will be around $300,000 or more. And we plan on having it there for, you know, 40, 50 years or till, if it ever becomes obsolete. But as we've discussed here tonight, terrestrial-based infrastructure is here to stay. There's more and more technologies coming out, edge data. As Tom mentioned, Dish and a lot of these 5G technologies support automation, driverless cars, scary as that is. But a lot of other business-to-business, machine-to-machine, and if you're familiar with the term Internet of Things. So a lot of smart data going back and forth, even when we're not paying attention to it. Inventory control, Dish in particular will be trying to work out stuff at state level. Police forces, universities, Department of Defense. So there's a lot of different technologies that will be enabled by these types of towers, including the one that we're trying to build here tonight. Any other questions?
All right, no further questions from the council. It is a public hearing. We asked that you sign up to come to the podium, state your name and your address. And if you would, first, you're welcome.
My name is Dr. Conyard, first name Shirley. I live on Landy Lane. There's three questions that I would like to ask. First, in terms of health. We know that in terms of research, with these towers, where they're congregated... there's more illness in terms of cancer. Children being born with defects. And the tower is going up in front of my house. Okay? The other one is property values. Can you tell me in terms of facts, where you're seeing property values have increased with these towers? No. The other one is water. I live right there at the watershed. Those streams that they're talking about, they lead into the watershed because there were trees and things cut down on the other side of Landy Lane. DOT had to go back to the contractors to make them remove the wood and stuff that they stuffed and those friends because they go run into the watershed. There are fresh friends that need to always be cleared. Okay? The other one that I want to talk about is in terms of the community. Why, and I live in the community. I get very good reception in the community in terms of television, cellular phones. There's no drop calls or anything. And I've been living in that section for 15, well, 16 years. Never had a problem. Unfortunately, I have Verizon. And if you can tell me, or the few research in terms of health, increased cancer, other problems that people that live close to these towers are having. Check the Mayo Clinic. In terms of research, they will tell you that. Now, can you tell me differently? Because it seems like to me, all you've been interested in is putting a poll up, not thinking about people that live in that area. And that area is, there's a lot of people that live there, and he's talking about where the towers are going. It's going in front of my house, it's going beside other people because that community is really based on how they make the cookie cutter houses. So they're very close. So there's no widespread. The land that he's talking about belongs to me in terms of not developed. And I did not and will not have it developed is because that community has been around there for almost 200 years in terms of my grandparents, great grandparents. My parents', great grandparents were hokes, pedophores. That's who Joneses, that's who lived in that community. Anything that's built up there, they did. So why bring something that's going to make people sick or devalue property? No one wants to buy your property if it's like that. Okay? The watershed. Now, I do not get my water from that watershed. Mine comes from orange elements. But people and ground in different places, that's where their water comes from. Now, I know there's radiation. I mean, they didn't talk about radiation that may pollute water, may pollute whatever you have around there. And in reading up on this, which I knew before because I was always in health service, and it's not good, it's not even good to have a lot of power lines around your house. And in that area, it's basically retired people. And you know, retired people do not fare out well with different pollutants in the air. There are also small children that play around there. So instead of thinking about how far you can get banned out when it's already very good in that area, not only, like I said before, television, but also health services. So why would you want to pollute an area that's clean and healthy? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to speak?
Randy, rest of you. My name is Curtis Brown. I've been living there ever since 46 years. And one thing, the guy mentioned, said it ain't no help, nothing. Down to your health, but ain't had nobody come out here and tell us that. Plus, they say it won't be nothing with your property value. Ain't nobody from, ain't had nobody from Alabama's county come out and say that it won't. Damn, he's great brother. Two, he said it'll help everybody in the neighborhood. Here, we have, I don't know, eight or 10 or 12 people here. One of them laying in the lane, if some of them couldn't come. And this thing been going on, except 2016. We didn't know nobody to put the sign on the road in June. So he done did all the work and all, and he ain't come and ask nobody in our neighborhood. He might have him near a creek. He ain't asked nobody in our neighborhood. Well, we haven't any problem, you know, nobody. And that it will be good for. And so I don't think, and I don't, or two and a half lot behind me. And I would go, when I bought the land, or they were building up out there, I was gonna put a mill or a motor home back there, and they said I could. And I didn't. I got rid of it here, gonna put one back there because of my granddaughter's thing, whatever, going to school and all. And she didn't make me say I can't, and that's my land. That's on the watershed. They say, but they can come here and put this, I don't know, on it, on it, you know. It's travel on it, and it's on the watershed. And I can't put nothing on my own land. If I was a mile more down the road, I probably could because it wouldn't be up under that way, it is PH some, maybe. And so we don't get nothing from Maven, don't pay Maven. Maven don't get nothing from us, but they still got to, you all got to sort it and tell us what we can do and can't. And I understand that because it's under the sea. But why be letting them put that towel in our community when they ain't even there meeting nobody? Ain't mentioning nobody. And they got all the works did up on it and cleared it out before we even had no. So I know at least 10 or 12 want to go against it, and it's up to you all. But just think about it, if it was you, your grandkids or someone going to be there. What you will feel about it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Good evening. I am Tameka Ward Satterfield, a resident of 519 Everglades Drive, which is in the Mill Creek subdivision. I am standing before you this afternoon, this evening, just to give a word of consideration. This is an opportunity for you all as a council to be very intentional about using a racial equity tool to assess whether this cell phone tower will have a disparate impact on the residents of Landy Lane in a way that is not just because they're residents of Landy Lane, but specifically because most of those residents are of African American descent. You can find one of these racial equity tools very easily. GARE, I think that's the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, has some questions that you can ask. There's also an organization, Race Forward, that has some questions that we ask a lot in the educational round, which is where I work. But I just encourage you all to not dismiss the racial overtones of this decision and use it as an opportunity to stand on some of the recent decisions and actions that you all have made to be very transparent about race and equity in Meven.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lydia Paylor, and I live on 4416 Landy Lane. I've been in Meven since 86. I moved to Landy Lane in 97. And Meven has really has grown up since I've been here. So it's not the little town of Meven that I used to know. But I just want to read some of my same concerns that was read at the initial meeting. My first concern is I have concerns about potential radiation exposure and health risks, health risk, excuse me, including cancer that may be associated with this tower. I have read up on it, but there are mixed reviews about this. And as someone else has spoken about, we really haven't heard anything to say, anything specific about radiation and potential cancer. I've read that the chances of falling is very slim, of the tower falling is very slim, but is not guaranteed. So if the tower happens to fall, are there any, will there be any buildings in the vicinity that will be hit or damaged, or if it fell and if it hit trees, and the trees would fall on any property, who would be responsible to remove the trees or fix the damage that was caused if it did fall? I did ask the question, will there be a fence or a barrier around the tower? Because there are kids in the neighborhood. Another concern is when there are storms in the area, how will it handle the storms and the lightning? Are there any concerns if it draw more lightning to the area? And another one of my concerns was how will this tower affect the surrounding property around it? Which I know that has been brought up. But again, as the other gentleman said, no one is saying anything about anybody's property value increasing because of the tower. And another concern is how will this affect the wildlife in their natural habitat? Some trees were cleared out several years ago, and the wildlife was forced to move, and now they are more in the residential areas. We have more deers in the area, in my yard, that comes. So there's, you know, more potential for deers to get, you know, hit or accidents to happen. And then I also had said that if this tower is within the Mill Creek area, then shouldn't it be proposed in an area closer to Mill Creek away from houses so that it wouldn't be a potential harm to them as well? And like Sister Shirley said, I have good reception. I haven't had any drop calls or anything like that. A good reception with TV. I am with AT&amp;T, not Verizon. But I don't have any problems with that. So as you can see, we have concerns about this tower being in our area. And if the vote was up to the residents, then my vote would be no. And specifically, if the residents don't want this tower in our area, then we shouldn't have to have the tower fit in our area. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else like to speak?
Mayor and council. My name is Anthony Hall. I'm at 1714 Route 119 in Meven. It's right across from the area that they're gonna put the tower. I retired down here in North Carolina, but my grandparents, I bought their house. Well, I took over their house, and they've been here for, I don't know, hundreds of years. The area that we all come down to here, even the people from the city, they come to go to the country, not to go where they have towers and chances of, you know, the radio waves. And they're talking about radio waves by the water. They don't know what that's going to happen in the next five years, 10 years. I put it to you this way. If it was in your backyard, would you allow it? And that's the vote that I'm saying. Before, one of the council members said that they had a brother who had a tower in their backyard for 25 years. Nothing's happened to him. But was it 5G? Was it 4G? Was it the powers that they have in this large tower now? Me myself, I believe I wanted it in my backyard. I don't know how far the tower is back in the three acres. I couldn't tell by their mass. All right, how close is the Landy Lane? How close is the 119? How close is their homes behind in the Rio on Landy Lane? I don't know the dangers of 5G. I don't think any of you do. But I don't think you would put it 100 feet, 200 feet, 300 feet, two acres near your house. I don't think you would do that. If you did, then, I don't know. What I'm saying is where we are, my grandfather owned all of that land. I think even the land that she is leasing out. I think he gave it to them years ago, to her parents or her parents' parents. That land there is all hope, pedophile land over there. Pool, and that's all family over there. And also my aunt, she's 90. She's across from me. She also asked me to speak in her behalf, that, you know, for the health reasons, we don't think it should be here. All right, nobody's giving us any information. They're giving you the information. But the people there, all they give you is a letter to come here. Right? How are you going to do that if it was in your backyard? I'm sure you wouldn't want to know what's going on. All right? All I'm saying is, we don't want it there. And you can see, we don't want it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Dave Whitley, 304 Van Hogen Drive in Mill Creek. Mr. Mayor, council members, I guess I'm the lone wolf here. I'm glad that the folks on Landy Lane have coverage, but I can tell you, I'm the guy on TV going, can you hear me now? And I do it every day. I go from the front courts to the back courts, this room, that room. One of the most aggravating things, I think all of us have had issues with service providers or charge cards. And you're on the phone with them, and your call's important to us. Hang on 15, 20, 30 minutes later, they finally get on. I get about three words out and a couple of answers from them. Gone. Start all over. It's an aggravating situation. I also like to say, a question for TowerCom. I drove down Landy Lane last week to see where the tower was going to go and where the houses are and that type of thing. And I didn't see any homes anywhere near where that tower was going to go. Do you know, anybody from TowerCom know how far the closest house is?
It's across the street from me.
You have a, you have a house across the street?
Yeah, the law, the law house.
You probably can't see it in the woods.
Okay, it's in the woods. No, I didn't see it. The houses I saw were further down. Okay, so you're across the street. Okay, thank you. I've lived in Mill Creek since 2014, and it's been seven years of no service. And as the TowerCom people said, you know, this is 2021, and there's a lot going on, and we need to be a part of it, in Mill Creek. And I appreciate your support for this tower. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley.
One of my questions. Curtis Brown again. They say if the tower won't be no harm or nothing, okay, down 119, where Ray Stowe is in Mill Creek Drive, I fight on that land there where the road been cut off. And one day, so he got an acre across that, and they'll be right there at Mill Creek. And he will be glad to let him put the tower right there. And he would be glad to let them put the tower right there. And so if they know, they had that man being right there. It'd be close to Mill Creek.
Hi, good evening. Susan Soundnight, four oh one Redwood Court. I live in the Mill Creek neighborhood. I've lived there for approximately fifteen years and I'm currently on the Meven, I mean, on the board for the neighborhood. And so here, a lot of conversation through the neighborhood about dropped calls. I live in the back portion of the neighborhood, right where the Almanx County line and the Orange County line runs. About two years ago, I was a caregiver to my parents who lived on the Orange County side. And even within five houses away, I continue to maintain and still do till today a landline just for the pure sake of emergency services and being able to access. So I really do appreciate all the studies that have been done. I think there's a lot of discussion to continue having in regards to the placement of it. But there certainly is a need in this portion of Meven for stronger cell service. And we've seen it this year with us all working from home and our children working from home. So it's, there's a need to be addressed. So thank you for hearing.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak?
Just a comment. Have the tower placed in Mill Creek if they happen for reception.
All right. TowerCom, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tom Johnson again. I wanted to go back over just some of the concerns that were mentioned. And keep in mind, this is quasi judicial. So it's a little bit different. We have standards we have to meet. And if we come forward with the evidence for that, then basically the council is obligated to issue the special use permit if we've met our burden. I do want to speak to some of the points that have been raised. First of all, there are two different setbacks in your ordinance. One is from property lines, but the other's from residential structures. We are not asking for a waiver on the residential structures. We more than meet that requirement under the ordinance for that setback. So I did want to make that clear since there have been some question about distance for structures. I want to reiterate, as I did earlier, that health and safety of radiation cannot be considered by this per state law. I mean, it's just very clear, no question, unequivocal. Impact on property values by state law, the only competent testimony regarding impact on property values is from an appraiser. Only appraiser that spoke to them is our appraiser. He did an analysis, the impact studies in your report and it showed there will not be substantial impact on the value. And that, you gotta look at what the ordinance says. It says will not substantially injure the value. And that was the opinion that our appraiser, Michael Burkle, was gave. An issue on pervious surface. This is a very small footprint. Hundred by hundred compound in the road to get to it. So we meet the impervious surface requirements and the strict ones in this watershed. It's just because this doesn't have much of a footprint. It doesn't have much impervious surface. As far as the analysis of the carrier, we chose a location for that whole area and it fills a gap. And as I showed earlier, and I want to go back and go back to that slide, you know, you've got the gap that is trying to cover right there versus, you know, the gaps there, the coverage is there. We try to get to the middle as best we can to make that coverage happen and make it better. And all those factors are into play, just like when you drive to locate a business or you're locating your home. There are a lot of factors that go into play and part of that is somebody's gotta be willing to sell it to you. And you try to look at locations, as we did here, undeveloped locations, which is what we looked for because we had to meet those setbacks from adjoining buildings and that sort of thing. So, you know, those things go in there. But also, I go back to state law. State law says the business decision about where to locate is not within the purview of this council either because it's a business decision, just like McDonald's may decide where they're gonna put their restaurant or Bojangles or whoever it may be. They, that's a business decision they make. The judgment that you have is, does this location meet the requirements to issue a special use permit? And I would say we've met that burden and we've shown that it does. Other concerns that were mentioned, there'll be a fence around the property that's required under the ordinance, so it will be fenced. Any damage related to this structure, just like any other structure that may be damaged during a storm and cause damage somewhere else, is insured. So that will be covered if it happens to damage someone else's property. In terms of lightning, there will be a lightning run and extensive grounding system. Computer equipment is very sensitive. And that's all this is, is computer equipment. It has to be protected from lightning. And the advantages it provides is this is gonna be a high point where the lightning will actually be drawn to there as opposed to surrounding properties. So it actually will make the area safer because there's a location for the lightning to go and it's dissipated with an extensive grounding system that prevents the harm to the sensitive computer equipment that's on site.
That's not necessarily true. Height has very little to do with lightning strikes. Actually, the positive and negative charge differential between the clouds and the ground. So if you've got proper grounding equipment, it's no more protection than my neighbor putting lightning rods on their house. That's not the case.
Sure, but it provides that protection so it's not gonna cause someone else to be hurt because if it hits the tower, because it's a high point, it's gonna dissipate. But no, I appreciate that. And a little more general than I should have. But the reality is, if lightning hits, it's gonna be dissipated. So this isn't gonna cause any damage if lightning hits the tower. Because it's got a lightning rod on it.
And I would expect it to be adequately grounded to install it.
It has to be. It has to. Otherwise, that equipment will be destroyed and you can't have that. And in reality, where this equipment has become the most valuable is during a disaster. The hurricanes like Katrina or Superstorm Sandy or any of the local hurricanes that happened, Floyd, and I had personal experience with that, telephone lines and electricity were down. And the only lifeline was the wireless system. Generators were keeping that system going. And despite a category five hurricane hitting the Gulf Coast in Katrina, there was amazing little damage to that infrastructure. It, you know, it, and the damage was mainly from flying debris hitting the structure, which could hit a house or anything else. It wasn't that it was a tower that it caused any more, you know, risk of harm than anywhere else. I mean, it was flying debris that could hit anything and damage anything. But these towers are built, as you said earlier, with the fall zone letter. They're built to bend, not to just fall flat. There's an extensive foundation design that keeps that from happening. And in this area, you know, the soil is, you know, there may be rock or whatever that you may hit that make it easier in the terms of that foundation. But even on the coast, extensive foundations, so that doesn't happen. I'm happy to answer any particular questions you may have. And again, I appreciate Mr. Bradley's comments about lightning. I do appreciate that.
Walk us through the reason for the setback request. I mean, actually, that is the question we're answering. And they've probably got a judicial hearing is concerning setback. And what drove the reasoning for the setback again?
Again, we were trying to get as far back as we could from the road to meet that setback because we felt that was important. And because of the creek in the middle of the property, it was difficult. We could not be right on the creek. We had to cross the creek and adjust the site for that. Landscape requirements and all that, we had to really work with the city. So that led to having to have this setback waiver on that one side. So then on the side that decides there were more toward where things were developed, we do need the setback. The other setback that we don't meet is an adjoining family member or family member owns that property. Is a member of the Nelson family. And of course, Ms. Nelson is the one we're directly looking from. So that's what happened. I'll see if George says if there's anything else I missed in that regard with the setback. I don't.
No, that's, that's pretty spot on. So we were trying to maximize the setback and distance from the properties that were residentially used so that we could keep it as far away from what the type of concerns that were expressed.
Yeah. And so that's why we maxed out, we made sure we met those setbacks and as we, we could not quite meet it in this location. But again, with the fall zone letter, it'll stay within the site. And that certified fall zone letter, which is where the concern's from. And again, the creek made a big impact on that because we could have moved it a little bit more above the creek.
And that's a setback from the adjacent property line.
Correct, it's the property line setback.
And that property is not developed.
Correct.
It is wooded.
Correct.
So if that property line didn't exist, there would be no setback, very interesting.
And, you know, again, as Mr. Davis previously explained, this is all part of the Nelson's family division. So that's all part of their division, family-wise, to do with. So that's another Nelson family member that owns that property that's undeveloped. So anytime it's developed in the future, obviously, who comes there will realize the tower's there. It'll be there and they're making that conscious decision to locate there, which is great for them.
Any other questions?
There's one that I'd like to ask you. You were asked about radiation before and you did not answer the question.
Again, I have to come back to the fact that radiation by law cannot be considered in making the decision. That's crystal clear in this statute.
Can you review why that's the case? Because one of the criteria does require that we determine that it will not material endanger public health or safety.
What the statute specifically says is the board in making the decision about health and safety cannot consider the effects of radio frequency. It specifically says that. That that is a consideration that the board cannot take into account. So, and it's because this is a federally licensed facility. It operates within the standards that Federal Communications Commission, so so forth. So your license is deemed safe because we meet the federal requirements.
I would like to ask a question of the council. As the area in terms of Landy Lane zone for commercial? Because this is clearly a commercial because it's a private concern.
I think, I think by an answer to your question, and I think inside you think, I think the cause of state law, we went through this several months ago with the 5G issues. Otherwise, this particular type of development is allowed on any zoning. Concern is called here is, as we use discussion, the concern here is the setback. It's lots, it's come into clauses that you want to.
You pretty much nailed it, sir. But yes, the general statute is clear that unit of local government, this town or city, county, does not have the ability to restrict these towers from any zoning district. We can't prohibit it in a residential or commercial or industrial district. We have to allow it in all. We can set forth development standards about what we want to see. We want a tower to achieve. And if they fail to achieve that, we can acquire special use permits, which is what is happening in this case.
And that's a federal policy.
As a state law.
Yeah, my memory was that law was passed at the state coming down from federal legislation.
Yes, the power was delegated to the state. The state set forth the statute to direct.
So years ago, we had a whole lot more leeway involving states. Federal law was changed. The FCC, and tell me if I'm wrong, the FCC passed rules and regulations. It basically took a lot of the power away from the local government. The federal government passed those rules and regs. It was then passed at the state level. And that is why we are where we are today. And the council can make decisions in this quasi judicial hearing based on, basically zoning, but cannot make decisions based on a lot of the things that we've heard discussed tonight. Those powers lie with the federal government and the state government.
And that's correct, Mr. Rollins. It goes back to the federal telecommunications act of nineteen ninety-six and the rules of the FCC since then. It basically does limit it to specific zoning criteria, the four criteria we have here. But those are still limited to the zoning criteria. And it's pretty clear that, it's very clear that the FCC has said that. And that, and state law has been brought into compliance with that too. So there is a Wireless Telecommunications Act. Si mentioned that, but there is one on the state level. And so that dictates what can and can be done, can and cannot be done by councils and commissioners in the state in making these decisions. And the whole idea from the federal level is to make sure that everyone has that access to wireless coverage and that carriers have equal opportunities to provide the wireless coverage to their customers.
Providing that it's not harmful to the community.
But even, our position is we've met the requirements. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Will this setback affect any land around it if it does get developed?
No, I mean, our position is we've got that, we've got the fall zone letter that shows it'll stay on site. There are numerous developments across the state and other places that are built right up next to towers more closely than this. If you've seen them around the landscape, AT&amp;T in the old days had old tall microwave towers. And you see these big horns on them. And those are across the state. And there've been a lot of residential subdivisions that go right up against the base of those towers. I mean, it's not unusual to see that happen. And, yeah, so.
Okay. Any further questions from the council? All right, we have a motion to, do we have a motion to close? We have a motion to close. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor will say aye. Mr. Green, how's your vote? Mr. Green votes aye. We have closed the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council?
Well, I think, I think, I think there's a need for the tower. I'm a little disappointed in the preliminary work done by the tower group by not meeting with the neighbors earlier. But I think that based on the criteria we have to decide on, we really don't have any grounds to turn it down. So I would move to approve special use request for the hundred ninety-nine foot tall non-stealth wireless communications tower. And reasoning is because the request is reasonable and in public interest because it finds that it will not material endanger the public for health or safety and those issues that we can consider. Will not substantially nor injure the value of joining anybody's property based on the real estate appraisal information we've heard will not, will be in harmony with the area, which according to our zoning regulations, state law, federal law, is allowed in any zoning category and will be consistent with the objectives and goals of cities adopted plans. And I say that because we're simply considering the setback and not the pros and cons of the cell tower.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Bradley said, that we are only considering the setback. We're not considering the tower in general.
Correct. All right, if no further discussion?
I would like to make one other comment too. I think that the concern about the, this community being under the primarily are African American. I think that's an issue we all considered. I just think it's, and I appreciate the comments about concerning using some of our tools on racial equity. But seriously, in this issue, there are just not a lot of leeway for the council to see. It's a one, two, three, four, and none of those racial equity, health and safety, none of those are issues that we by statute can consider this because of the government. And we discussed 5G several, it may have been a year ago. Starts running together, but, you know, we're all gonna have one of these towers with 5G within two or three thousand feet of our homes. There's gonna be one downtown in the middle of the downtown business area. We're actually sitting halfway in between two of the towers, one at the end of this city on this side and one at the end of the city on this side. I'm talking about four blocks in each direction on both sides. We're sitting right now in between two of these towers. So I appreciate the comments about the, I just don't think this has anything, our decision capacity in this area has anything to do with. our decision capacity in this area has anything to do with the type of community. It would have been the same discussion regardless where it would have been placed.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Green?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for being here, your comments, their respect and everything you showed tonight. We, we really appreciate it. Thank you. I'd like to take a five-minute break. Get started, please. Before we move out to the, the second, uh, of our three. Before we step into our public hearing thing, I would like to have our assistant city manager, President Mitchell, to introduce a couple of new employees, and himself if he wants to.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have, uh, our new public works director and also new finance director, Chuck Smith and Daphne Schwartz.
We haven't seen people because of the mask, so we're getting to see you.
Thank you. See my whole face.
Thank you, welcome to Mavon.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Welcome. All right, we're starting the second part of our, uh, public hearing, the ordinance to extend the corporate limits. Uh, Levin Road 3, LLC, Tubal John. Uh, Mr. Brown?
Uh, Mayor members of the council, this is a matter that came before you last month. Uh, the court issued a certificate of sufficiency as to petition for annexation. Uh, and you set your date of public hearing for tonight. Uh, this is a voluntary contiguous annexation of 94 acres in Orange County. And, uh, uh, I think that it, uh, you heard, uh, regarding the Tubal injunction on the zoning issue before. So I know that you're all very familiar with it. Uh, I would like to make one comment for the public record. Uh, there has been a lot of discussion about the State's Cook Rock that is located on this property, and it has been vetted in Orange County, Allen County. I spoke with Tracy Davenport on Friday of last week, who is the head of the, that is, uh, historical museum. And she says that her board has discussed it and that, uh, they have concluded that they would go with North Carolina Department of Cultural Affairs opinion that the supposed rock has no historic value. Uh, the legend was that someone was buried under the rock, but it is not a rock. Uh, it is a protrusion of a rock formation. So there's no one buried under the rock. That would be physically impossible. But, uh, that has gotten a lot of, well, comment, uh, on, on the internet and has been, again, vetted by city staff, apparently in the historical museums and, uh, Department of Cultural Affairs.
Okay, thank you. Does the council have any questions? Well, it is a public hearing. Anybody from the audience like to speak on this matter? All right, if not, do we have a motion to close? So we have a motion to close, we have a second.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the city of Mavon to include this 94 acres.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve any further discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Green?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on. Ordnance to extend the corporate limits, Mavon Investors LLC, Magnolia Green, Glenn.
Uh, very similar, mayor members of the council, uh, very similar to the preceding requests in terms of the procedure, uh, the court issued her certificate of sufficiency. Uh, and you set the date of public hearing for tonight after accepting that. It's a non-contiguous annexation in that, uh, it is not a joint, um, by continuity the, uh, primary city limits. It is an extension of the Magnolia Glen subdivision. It's 23.53 acres located in Allen County. And staff recommends that you adopt an ordinance to annex this property.
Any, any questions from the council? If not, need a motion to close?
Second.
Second motion, we got a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. I like asking you. Um, all right.
We adopted an ordinance, an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the city of Mavon to include this 23.53 acres.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor will say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Green?
Aye.
There you go. All right, that concludes the public hearing. Uh, moving on to the VPAC Better Block Request. Uh, Katie Jones and Chelsea Morrison. Did I say that right, Chelsea?
Yes. Hello, Katie Jones, 500 South Fifth Street, Metin. Chelsea Morrison, 206 Blue Lake Drive, Metin. All right, and we have some slides. How should we advance these slides?
Right there.
So much.
Uh, no, the front one.
This one right here? Okay, so thank you, thanks, I. Hello, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We are here on behalf of the, uh, pedestrian, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee to suggest, uh, your approval for two projects that we would like to do as a part of the Better Block Trailer. So to start off with, we'll provide just a little bit of an overview of what is the Better Block Trailer. So the Better Block Trailer is a shared community resource that is available to, uh, communities within Allen County. It is currently maintained by the city of Cram. And it is a trace of resources that are available for temporary implementations of pedestrian and bicycle improvements. In a way, it is an opportunity for us to, uh, try out pedestrian bicycle improvements before we actually commit city resources to, um, implement, uh, them for real, in essence. Uh, it's also a really great opportunity for us to get input from the community on certain, uh, activities and projects that we want to do, um, as well as to get, uh, recommendations from the community on what we may be able to do in the future. I do want to also note that the city of Mavon actually participated as a partner agency, uh, when it was first, um, developed and actually contributed funds when the trailer was actually initially stocked. How can it be used? There are a variety of ways that we can use the resources within the trailer. Uh, we can do temporary cross, crosswalks, uh, we can do temporary, um, speed reduction, uh, as well as some outdoor dining. These two handsome gentlemen are my sons. Uh, on the one evening a couple of weeks ago, when we were in downtown Elon, they have a variety of different outdoor dining opportunities, uh, in Elon that we talked about. Um, so we are here this evening, uh, to give you an opportunity to, um, essentially approve two projects that we would like to do. Um, and I'll turn it over to Chelsea, who's going to provide an overview and talk through the first project.
Sure, so, um, our two projects that we'd like to start off with while we have the Better Block Trailer are, um, traffic coming measures in the Ashbury subdivision and a downtown parklet, um, which is an area, um, that would be blocked off for, um, outdoor dining. I'm sure you've seen that we have food trucks that have been coming, um, to the downtown area. And there's not many places for them to sit. But I will talk about, um, the Ashbury project and then I'll hand it over to Katie about Parklet. Um, thank you. So, um, Ashbury, the Ashbury neighborhood, um, is, um, has been known to have, um, a lot of traffic issues along this stretch of Blue Lake Drive, which is, um, seen at the top in blue. Um, there are no stop signs and several cross streets. And there's a lot of traffic that cuts through from 70, which is at the bottom. Um, it would be off the screen far down at the bottom, um, cutting through York Loop by going up, I don't have a pointer to it, um, by going up, um, Ashbury Boulevard and taking a left onto Blue Lake, as well as folks coming from York Loop, the other direction. And lots of curbs where, um, they're kind of lined and, um, people just seem to forget the speed limit. So Blue Lake is, is one of those. And then Mockingbird, which is the newer street, um, also has some of those issues. So what we're proposing, um, to try out temporarily to see, uh, how this helps are several stop signs along, uh, Blue Lake Drive and Mockingbird, and then several crosswalks, um, based on, um, uh, discussions with Si about, um, measures that are, um, not intersection related. One of the things is crosswalks that are not located at an intersection. The visual that can help drivers stay alert, um, and help them slow down. So, um, there's a trail network within the neighborhood where the trail will come out and it just kind of stops right at the street. It doesn't go onto a sidewalk. So some of the crosswalks that, um, we're recommending for this project are, uh, were trails and, and then they would cross over the street to, um, to a, a connecting sidewalk. And then some of them are just at some of the busier intersections in the neighborhood. I think there is an example. So here you'll see on the left side is where the trail comes out just onto the street. The crosswalk would take it, um, across to the sidewalk area. So, um, and I can detail some more about why these intersections were chosen. Um, if, if you have specific questions about that. We also have the Ashbury HOA president, Andrew Vixler, here if you'd like comment. Uh, it's generally, um, among the neighborhood, the chatter among social media groups and at HOA meetings and that kind of thing, um, has been, that this is something that's been needed for a while. Um, so if you'd like to hear from.
I would love to hear from the HOA president, any thoughts and inputs. It'd be fantastic.
Good evening, I'm Andrew Vixler, I'm the HOA president for Ashbury subdivision and 703 Blue Lake Drive, Metin. So we've had a, a continuing problem, of course, I live on Blue Lake Drive, so I can be first eyewitness. We have people that come down that road, you know, I've seen them come down in excess of 40 miles an hour. And I know people that have been taking it at 50 miles an hour through there, um, that don't live in the subdivision after a couple of hours sessions with long portion after. Um, and I, I think what Chelsea's brought up to us by, by doing this temporary, uh, it's like a low cost to see if it works, um, thing to fix kind of that particular speeding problem. And plus it kind of gives, you know, people protection with crosswalks and stuff like that. So when they're crossing the road, you know, they have the right of way, so people have to stop. Um, I know that the city of Mavon came through and put a four-way stop sign on Ashbury Boulevard. Um, I think it was a year ago, but like you said earlier, tonight, time blends together around here. So, but that was, um, in my general opinion, was a, a great improvement and it's cheaper. So, but that was, in my general opinion, was a great improvement, and it's cheaper than doing speed bumps or humps, which the fire department and EMS and police don't like because it slows down emergency response time. The stop signs have a little bit more leeway there. People kind of can see them, and they can kind of roll over. It doesn't damage equipment, but it's a, it's a cost-effective way to, to help and see if it's going to help our neighborhood become a more safer place for our children and people who live there. So I'm all for it, and everybody I've talked to in our neighborhood is, is all for it. So, thank you.
I got a question, the chief. If we put up stop signs that they're proposing, is that an official? I know in the past, we've, you know, I mean, can you, can you just put them up anywhere? I know we have voted on where we put stop signs in the past.
I'm not quite familiar with what council's procedure is in terms of the implementation. But what I can tell you, Mayor Cox, is that once they are implemented, they do become enforceable under the general statutes.
Good, good. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Have you all talked about how you will measure whether, i- if, if we choose to move forward with your request, how you will measure whether these steps are achieving the goals that you wanted to achieve, and then also how you will measure whether or not the neighborhood supports them after they've been up for a period of time?
That's a good question. And aside from any city measures that can be taken, like setting up cameras, I don't even know if that would be possible, but I think it'll be more qualitative feedback from the neighborhood. And a couple of ways that we can collect that, we were very active, social media page on Facebook, which is where, actually, when I, when I mentioned that this might be a project, 100% of the comments were in support of it. Other than that, you know, there's some people who aren't on those platforms. We have access to mailing addresses and emails for every member of the community. So if it were helpful, we could put out, we could have Andrew put out a message to everyone asking for feedback through some sort of survey.
Yeah, I could add. You know, ultimately, the, the charge of the VPAC is to put forth recommendations to the city for pedestrian and bicycle improvements. This is an opportunity for us to test drive those. So ultimately, I think we see success of these measures as getting positive input from the community or, or measures that they are working. And, and if they don't, I think that's also a really important measure that we are able to kind of experiment and test with some things. And then, you know, perhaps not make a recommendation to something for city funds if it actually doesn't end up working. So that's something certainly that we want to be mindful of as well. We have a couple of, we actually have on our August meeting on our agenda specifically to nail down the exact survey methodology, which we're going to actually gather that feedback specifically for both of the ideas.
I have just a general comment and a question. I think the Better Block Trailer is a wonderful idea because you get to, as you said, test drive ideas in a cost-efficient way. It may be that your community discovers that four, four stop signs is better than six stop signs. You're going to be able to get the specific feedback so that those things are placed in the right area, or they're going to have the most impact. I think it's a great idea. And I haven't been to a bike and pet committee meeting in a long while, so I haven't met you, Katie, but I certainly have worked with Chelsea in the past. I think that the efforts that the Bike and Pet Committee is making toward making, toward making Mavon a safer place are extraordinarily important. And safety for pedestrians is paramount. I'm not sure how it passed that we have those trails ending on streets where they're not connected to sidewalks, but I'm sure that our review committee is making sure that doesn't happen on new, new subdivisions, right, Si?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So that's my comment.
I want to commend you guys. Thank you so much. I actually have had conversations with the HOA presidents, and they feel for that over there in Orange County. Probably same thing with the old Hillsborough. These islands and communities around town. Thank you so much for reaching out to Orange County. Thank you so much for trying to bring more Mavonites into the fold. So I'm excited. I'm, I'm real excited to see where this goes and what the community feedback will be. So thank you for your hard work.
How long do you, how do you, how long do you run the trials?
Absolutely. We have the trailer actually reserved for a three-month period, August, September, and October. So that's because it's a shared resource with the city of Graham, and they maintain it. We have to put in our requests and kind of work with obviously the other communities as well. So that's a three-month period for now.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question. I just forgot. But I also wanted to ask you about, you haven't presented about the parklet yet.
Yes.
But I, I was glad to see in the, in the packet that you had talked with the neighboring businesses, and at least one of them is here tonight, I see, and seems to be supportive of that.
Yes.
How are you going to engage all of the local businesses so that we get the maximum use out of this parklet?
Yes, I'll hand it over again. Yeah, so to provide a very quick overview, so this is the outdoor dining area that would be an enclosed space. We did reach out to Destination Downtown. They did discuss this particular project in their June meeting and received overwhelmingly positive feedback. As you can see, Kelly is here today, and in her support, I promised her that she wouldn't have to talk, so I'm not going to make her, as well as Kat from Impulse Creativity. We also spoke to Kat. I think in general, there's a couple of things. This is the recommended location that we are suggesting at the corner here of Clay and Fourth. We do have the option actually to, to move it around. So we did receive the input that other businesses would like it closer to their, their business locations. We do have the option to do that. And we had discussed, as I mentioned, we're going to finalize this in the August meeting, of actually putting a QR code on the actual location of the parklet so that community members, business owners can scan that QR code, get feedback. Also, we do have a lot of social media as a, as a result or as a part of that. And then I think just personally, the members of the committee are committed to securing feedback from additional members of the downtown as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a question. Am I a gap gathering from that picture? Is that two parking spaces would be used for that?
So the recommendation is that it is no more than two. We're expecting for it to be one to two parking locations, yes.
And, Ms. Mayor, could we go back just a minute to the previous part of the presentation?
Yes.
Is there supposed to be a stop sign at this location?
There's a stop sign coming off of five fine, but there, no, I don't believe so. Go back one to the map. Yes, no stop sign at that location, since there's one at Large Oak, which is just the next one over. Yes, and then also at Ashbury Boulevard.
Chief? To, to your point, Mr. Mayor, just wondering if you guys have a sign that's just provided? Does it meet the statutory guidelines? We know that.
That's a good question.
Yeah, we're going to defer to your side.
So as noted in the packet, the Better Block Trailer is deficient in a few things. One is stop signs. So we will need to coordinate with you, chief, on, on that so that they do meet statute and that they meet the MGD as well.
Yes.
I guess, I mean, I think it's a wonderful idea, and then it's great that we've got that resource to, to seem to me that, you know, expanding it would, it would have helped us in a couple of other situations, like run the lane and put three stop signs.
Yes.
We should have tried that before we stuck them in the ground. Just curious, the, the, uh, Ashbury is in Orange County, and there's no problem with using Orange County trailer since Mavon participated, Birkson are working with the trailer.
I believe it's through the city, and Ashbury is part of the city.
Since it's in Orange County, is there an issue with using it since Ashbury is in?
No, sir.
Just, just, just Mavon participated in it, so Mavon community.
So this was City of Graham required, which was awarded the, the funds for the trailer through Impact Aliments. Impact Aliment, and the city in full participated as a partner financially, as well as in our letter of support as part of that. Impact Aliments, it's not decided that they want to exclude Orange County residents from the benefits of the trailer. They want to include the entire city.
That is a great idea. One of the, Mr. Mayor, just another question. Is this part also the downtown parklet, also a three-month trial?
Yes.
And, Ms. Mayor, or city manager or attorney, you know, was to do either of these on a more permanent basis, if you were to want to do that? What kind of notification and/or hearing would be required? To the citizens in general?
I don't think that any hearing would be required before putting up stop signs or imposing out parking spaces on a city street, since the city owns them. I don't think there's any legal requirement, but as these ladies have done, legal talk and communicate with affected property owners if it becomes a permanent situation. And, and Mayor, I think because this involves stop signs that require law enforcement, I think you do need to take action on these.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was asking, yeah. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much for the opportunity to present and for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay. It was a pleasure to counsel.
We support the Better Block Trailer and Mobile Parklet to realize the two temporary Better Block projects in Ashbury and it's select, at a select place, street parking on West Clay Street, North Fourth Street, as proposed in the city's bike, by the city's bike and pet community.
Very well put.
I have to edit it a little bit.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Green? All right, buddy. All right, thank y'all very much for the presentation. Mr. Hope, presentation of wastewater treatment capacity, part two. I think I was absent for part one, but that's, that's.
We didn't call on the first part, part one.
Thank you, thank you, buddy.
This is part two. Mayor, council, good evening. We last, we last met in March. We talked about what our available treatment capacity was at our Worf plant, and that'd be part of random agreement at the Grand Wastewater Treatment Plant. So this picks up in there. So.
Mr. Hope, remind everybody who you are.
I'm sorry, I'm Brad Hope. I'm in the city, and you're also with Allenas County. Thanks, Chris. So I think also, you heard the word, maybe for the first time, I don't know, paper flow from Chris. Talked to state about paper flow on many occasions, and, but basically, we're trying to develop effective strategies on wastewater. Number one being limit the accumulation of paper flow. Sometimes paper flow is two, three times higher than the actual flow amount that is when it's treated or in the system. One of the other things we wanted to do was talk about the encouraging limited flow. I think when Daryl completed his long-range utility plan, that time he indicated we were 60% residential flow, 40% non-residential. I went back and looked at the last 10 years, and it hovers right around that mark every year. The other item that we briefly touched on in our last time talking about treatment capacity was reducing I-9. I put also in there limiting it. As you grow, you, you're at more risk. As your system gets older, you're at more risk. And again, that's 200, 300,000 gallons a day of that 1.75 MGD that we have at the Worf. We talked about having, or internally talking about developer awareness on permitting strategies, as there'll be some changes that we recommend, and hopefully y'all will support that and adopt that. And other items that are related to wastewater, including most recently, past system development phase that are now implemented, updating the long-range utility plan, and looking at possible other agreements that we can have in place and related expansions. So looking at the strategies to limit the accumulation of paper flow. I've put these in two categories. Projects that were, have already been approved, and projects that will end up coming to council after this meeting. Permanent wastewater flow on multi-phase project at one time, we recommend that doesn't be allowed anymore. We've done that on a couple of projects, like one of our plans approved. But it really takes a long time for a project to get off the ground, get going. I'm going to give you an example in a minute. And so that higher amount of flow stays with you for a longer period of time. What we want to do is allow additional phases of development to be permitted. Once a final plan has been received or approved from the current phase that they just built, rather than continuing on and permitting other phases. What we've seen recently, we have several projects like this, is whether I'll start a phase or permit a phase, and then we'll break it up into smaller phases because they haven't progressed far enough long. Would prefer folks permit what they intend to plant, do smaller projects, permit them, get them built, get them off the books at a higher amount of flow. Now, all goes back to what we call paper flow. Now, I'm going to give you an example from our good friend, Mr. Parker, since he said we could. He's a local developer and an engineer, so he's very familiar with permitting issues. January 2016, we improved our water sewer system layout. His initial permit was in, issued in August of 2017. He had 406 lots permitted flow, and if had you permitted it all at one time, he didn't, which is good, it would have been 110,000 gallons a day. This, almost August 2021, four years later, and we still have 273 homes yet to be built in that subdivision, that 406. That would have carried with it a 70,000 gallons a day flow. Instead, he's permitting by phase, which is what we want to see. Now, flip side of that is he recently had a 70 lot of phase three subdivision that he wanted to sub-phase. He's ready for his first 35 homes. I believe that was presented as a final plan to city council, which was approved. But we are permitted for the 70 homes, which he is now getting back on and trying to get those constructed. So you can see the importance of carrying flood. Try not to carry it. For projects approved after today's meeting or whenever we develop policies as we move forward, the pretty much, I have the full three bullet points would apply for item one, except for in the single family, that we're saying you need to have not only planted those lots, but started to at least have the homes in that area. The whole idea is to stretch out the flow, the process, allowing the development of projects that have already been approved to come into the system. For multifamily development, potentially just saying three, three big unit buildings, apartment buildings, if you have parks. Right, right now, I believe we have one apartment complex at Mavon Town Center, and that's the only one, and it was all permitted at one time. So a new project that comes in, we would want to see that if it's six units, we would only want to approve three buildings in a particular year, or permit three buildings in a particular year. Apartments fill up fast, and therefore, we're trying to spread things out. The goal is, is to limit or establish a goal limit, the annual number of units to what we received this last year. I think we received about 400 certificates of occupancy. We think that is a solid number. In terms of plan review and approval process, we would consider residential projects, recommend considering. we would consider residential projects, recommend considering residential projects at one meeting. The non-residential, we would consider either meetings. We hold two meetings a month. The pre-destruction conferences and pre-development meetings, that wouldn't change. Major projects, project that's about 300 units, it's about 100,000 gallons a day would permit it. That's a big impact on the city. It also impacts potential fire, public works, et cetera. And it's just thought that prior to somebody getting going on a lot of work because they spend a lot of money on plans and whatnot, that they at least have that discussion with management. Is this particular area a good idea for development of that magnitude, that kind of conversation? Strategies and encourage lending growth. What we would like to see or think about is potentially reserving some flow. I think once we move or reroute the through the two reroute projects, you can all agree. That's going to free up about 275,000 gallons a day at the work. Once we do the half-meeting gallon expansion, hopefully that's gets underway, gets built, permitted and approved by 2025, that'll add half meany gallons a day. That potentially puts us back to 1.1 whenever you've already considered the other flow that is not yet built but becomes tributary. So when doing so, that would mean that 700,000 gallons a day of that 1.1 billion would be available for new residential over time. But 400,000 would be reserved for the Orange County Development Economic Development District. We do that now. That agreement drops off next year, but we had activity in that area. So it's a good idea. Good idea to keep that reserving flows in our industrial parks. The North Commerce Park, that flow does not count against us in what our agreement will bring. And we have opportunities up and down the interstate for non-residential development, whether it be institutional, commercial, or office. And then considering infield development, that's also one of the things that we need to help point people toward areas that are very near our system that would not be much of an impact as you have when you go further away from the existing system. Other prioritization types, you know, just make some reservation or consideration for addressing public health needs or underserved areas. Definitely industrial, institutional, commercial, unique residential projects. I think there's some consideration for doing some unique projects downtown. We want to make sure we have flow and power tests in those areas. The last two is very important and by the way, I've had a lot of help internally with staff of Chris and Preston in helping develop some of these strategies and ideas and y'all are more welcome to jump in anytime. But those last two, go to really where new development requiring new pump stations or oversized facilities, that can be a burden on the city taking on those things. They always need to be upsized. We would like to consider that anybody who decides to do those kind of projects is willing to pay for what the city needs as well, that that could be a priority, then become a priority city. Our priority is we need a system development fees to go to our CIP approved projects. They include the water storage tank, the plant expansions and reroutes and not particularly just upsizing lines that probably we get out outside of our service area. Methods to limit and reduce inflow infiltration. We have done two studies, extensive studies on Third Street Pump Station Sewer Shed and Fifth Street Pump Station Sewer Shed will search downtown area. We had a lot of recommendations in there. We've talked about, we do have INI projects adopted in CIP. I believe that these two were ones that we're looking at doing kickoff meeting on Friday. Talk about going out for an RQ related to that. Alfalfa that we had going in the plan, it's an older line. It probably needs re-lining. And manhole we have. And also something to consider is establishing some kind of program where we treat our water and services like we do streets, understanding there's repairs that need to be made, upgrades that need to be made. Don't have a real good idea about what to put in there, but I think there's a commitment at least or a consideration on some of these funds that we may begin that at least start that process on Third Street and Fifth Street. We also did follow-up on areas that were identified on our desktop analysis that we did, completed for the city. We also did a recent sewer metering that Kyle did out down around the treatment plant. You know, that we saw some results there that told some areas don't need to be addressed and some definitely do, including the GE Sewer Shed. Permitting policy and prioritization awareness. This already occurs. We already sit down with developers, we go ahead and tell them what our capacity, our needs are, what our plans are, where we're at in capacity. We need to tell them, explain to them. I think we have. We've met with some folks initially, we're considering residential development. I believe they are now considering industrial development instead. The impacts are less when you're dealing with industry that's not wet. The segment can lessen what you have with residential development. And really it's basically getting them to understand that everybody can't get through the door at one time. There's got to be an orderly process to development, to dealing with water sewer capacity. And also they need to understand that their project, they have to wait. If it's a project that requires certain facilities be done, like a pump station reroute or whatnot, that's fine. That can be done. It's done with the flow tracking forms that we fill out. There's a planning assessment. It says if you can't treat this flow right now, what project's going to be done to allow you to treat that flow? So that's done frequently. I hate to call this a catch-all, but other items. Other items are just, you know, continue to look at our system development fees. You know, our system grows, the value of it grows, project costs increase. So you constantly need to be looking at where you need to be in system development fees. I think the state recommended a 25-year process. We think two years for fast run areas, what you need to do. I think that we talked about, Mr. Bradley, you may have even wrote it out about the long-term agreement that we have with Hall River. That was for a half-meeting gallons a day. What we've talked about is looking at maybe 15 in that agreement, maybe not for that amount. I don't know. But go over green pump station sewer shed, that would be a good example of a flow that could be rerouted. Has a cost, but it could be done. Updating the long-range utility plan, I think Daryl presented that in November of 2016. It's been five years. We need to, we've done that kind of internally, but we need to come back to council. And it needs to include some of the ideas that we talked about. And lastly, the work expansions. Of course, we're moving forward with the renovations. We'll be looking at that shortly. Got a half-meeting gallon a day expansion plan and we're in discussions talking about another meany gallon a day expansion. That I will, we will try to answer the questions that you can have.
Brad, you mentioned that we need to establish a strategy and a policy. Do you think, is it necessary for the council to direct you to do that or are you doing it?
Well, in talking with Mr. Brown recently, he thought some of these items would be, city would be well-served and it was a policy.
Right.
So that it's in writing. People, nothing can change when circumstances change. But to go ahead and look at craft and some policies that back up or support these kind of ideas.
We're moving ahead with all with these suggestions and then would the policies be back to us to look at?
Well, I would think that we've been looking at this for a while. So I would think the next month we could have crafts and policies we can look at.
So you're, you're, you think what would be best was to take these strategies that you just presented to us, that you all are already sort of employing and make it more official with a policy from the council?
I think so.
But you'll, but you'll still be presenting that concept or that philosophy to developers to come in and say, I want to rezone this for apartments and your.
Mr. Bradley, they come in every day.
This is council. We're not really looking for apartments in that area, et cetera, et cetera.
I think, I think Chris, I know Chris and Preston have done a very good job of that.
I don't, I don't think the, I mean personally, the close review for residential wastewater is in a good stance, but I don't think it's going to hurt anybody, any of the other departments' feelings to slow down just a little bit on that and try to check balance our infrastructure, police officers, firefighters, streets. You mentioned the, you mentioned the annual maintenance. I know, I'm sure we have annual maintenance in the wastewater treatment, but I mean, you're right. There's just going to be, there's simply a number of lines that need to be replaced before they break. We know they're going to break or we've already had 12 breaks on a three-block area. I mean, I think all that evaluation, taking, taking a deep breath right now would not be unwelcome, I don't believe, by anybody in some of these future residential developments. Well, I need a motion to, in that, in that light. I make a motion that we accept the capacity recommendations, wait for treatment plant capacity, reduce flow recommendations as presented and ask them to develop them into a more formal policy for consideration. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Green?
Mr. Green just called me. He no longer has service. We didn't have a form of council present.
Okay.
He is no longer online.
Maybe past his bedtime or something. I don't know. Anyway, all right, the motion to proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel.
Thank you for your work on this.
Mr. Holt also has, Mr. Holt also has the next item.
I'll be right back.
I would say one thing. So part of our goal is to sort of not grow twice as fast as what we're growing this past year. And we were really headed in that direction where instead of having three or 400 units in a year, it was looking like we could be having seven, 800 units a year. And that's where this paper flow starts stacking up. We talked about this at the budget retreat was when we started first talking with y'all about this. And we did not anticipate that last year, over 2,000 new homes would be submitted for approval during, during a calendar year. We have never seen, we've had, I mean, everybody in this room knows, we've had a lot of growth in Menon over the last 10 years, but it was reaching the point to where it was twice as much as our biggest year, which we just had last year. So that's sort of what stimulated that along with the wet weather that we had last year. That wet weather, you know, the sewer plan doesn't see whether it's sewer from a house in an industry or sewer straight from the creek because the ground has been so wet for three months and there's just so much more water getting in the manhole or getting in the cracks in the line. So that's sort of what has pushed us to this level that we are at now. And I will commend the council, the ARP money coming from the federal government. We recommended using that for inflow and infiltration and got unanimous support from the council. So over the next couple of years, we'll be receiving that money. And part of what France was talking about was that inflow and infiltration and using those funds to present basically that clean water that's getting into our old lines. I mean, you got to go back to sewer lines and started getting built a long time ago. You know, 60, 70, 80 years ago and they're still in the ground today. So we do need to start doing some more work than we've done in the past. And Menon's actually done a better job than a lot of other cities. You hear about the infrastructure problem in our country and a big piece of it is the sewer infrastructure. Which plays right into this next.
A nice capital project. So I think when we last met, we were in the pros, we had applied for the authorization to construct the renovations and improvements at the work. We opened bids last Thursday afternoon. We advertised, we solicited, actually sent the advertisement to 13 bidders. We did get three bids and they ranged from about $7 million to 6.972 million to 7.41 million. A low bidder was Heron Construction Company Incorporated from, I hope I say this right, Edelweiss Tennessee. I did put this up next note down here. They recently completed the Boyd Creek Pump Station Replacement Grant. Did an excellent job. They're an excellent contractor. Also touched base with Bob Patterson over at City Burlington. They've completed two or three projects with them. He had nothing but good things to say about Heron Construction. Have you seen this before? The work is at the Headworks expansion. We're adding a larger unit to sign what we have now. That's the biggest part of this project. It also plays into our future expansion. It's size to be able to handle that additional half-meeting gallons expansion that we talked about doing. That part alone was 3.1 billion of that. That's almost 7 billion amount. And rubber stabilization, solid spitting, polymer upgrade, secondary clarifier improvements. We have three clarifiers, all which are going to have these same improvements made and some electrical treatment upgrades. On the next slide, you'll note, this is, this is where some of the activities taking place. The Headworks been to the right of your page over the north side. The two digesters there that we're putting in, we're putting new blowers in, new mixers for diffuse aeration and the three clarifiers to the left of your page. They're all getting improvements as well. Project budget has changed. The bids did come in about 1.3 million dollars higher than, than what the pre-bid estimate was and what we, what the Jagger's engineers call the midpoint estimate. And basically we've gone back and had some contingencies from the May budget that we prepared to get us to the next phase and that is trying to get the financing done for this project. All that being said, when you look at the design, the construction admin, other professional services, the fact that it's a pilot plant, which we think is. professional services, uh, fact that it's a pilot plant, which we think has done a good job, Dennis is here and he can speak to, he can speak to that. Um, that's got to be purchased and, um, when you look at that, that's a $523,000 item on its own. Uh, but all total, a $9 million budget, uh, for needed improvements and, uh, we certainly recommend a tentative contract award to Heron Construction Company Inc., um, based on their, it would be a $6,927,000. We know that there's, uh, some financing, uh, items that we come back to you in August. Uh, and then we have to go to LGC, uh, for their approval going into lead down, yes.
Will your, will your loan be 9,000 because of LCC going, is that the loan amount you're seeking approval for just, uh, just a bit amount?
That, that is the plan right now.
9,000?
I mean.
We wish 9,000.
I don't like saying million, right? All right, any, well, any questions from Mr. Hold?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm wondering if something got transposed. As I understood, the first explanation, the low bid was 6.972. But on this one, it says 6.927.
I think it is 6.927.
All right.
So our, our, our low bid is, uh, almost $50,000 over that. Yeah, sorry about that.
We approve the tentative contract award for the Rourke renovation project to the low bidder, Heron Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $6,927,000, subject to subsequent project financing approvals.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, sir.
I do want to remind you, so next month will be before you with the financing of this project and, uh, we are talking with the local government commission. As all of you know, we can't just go out and borrow money. We have to get approved by the local government commission to borrow, uh, money. Uh, we're talking about borrowing, uh, potentially 1.5 million on top of this if they approve it, which would also help fund the, uh, the relocation or the.
Reroute.
Reroute of the GKN pump station so that we could move some of that flow that France talked about, uh, from being treated at this plant to being treated at the grand plant.
To a big 10.5 million?
Yes, sir. Uh, we don't have a final approval on that yet. Uh, typically they require you to have all your drawings done and your permits in hand. Uh, but looking at the small size of that project, looking at the very good rates we're expecting to get, it seems to make the most sense, uh, since that project is already being designed, to go ahead and borrow that money at its cheaper rate, uh, sort of tagging it on to the 9 billion to get the extra million and a half to also fund, uh, GKN reroute.
Thank, thank you, Chris. Mr. Stover?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, I will be as brief as I can, um, on the two items that are next on your agenda. There are the planning board re, uh, appointment and then, uh, the following item will be the recommendation of a project, uh, to represent the Almanz County ETJ on the planning board. Planning board appointment is very straightforward, there are four openings. Uh, Mr. Thomas Vincent, uh, resigned from the planning board for the winter in good health, uh, in good spirits and, uh, I believe in retirement, but consequently we have four openings on the planning board. The three incumbents have all, uh, reapplied. Uh, we have posted this numerous times on social media, on our website, um, and issued press releases and advertisements, um, uh, to the local papers, um, but we have received no more than the three applications at this time for a planning board.
Will we be voting on the three or are we gonna be a 24th one at will?
So the, the position is open and you, they serve at your pleasure and if, uh, the position is open and applications will can be accepted.
I would like to hear everyone's opinion, but I would really like to see you reach out to, to react, uh, committee numbers, 40 of them that we disappointed unfortunately and anyone else that maybe we have, that we turned away in the past. Really like to hear everyone's opinion on that. I think I bring people that have applied before in the past, I'm sure they would love to serve under their committee, that opportunity.
Ms. Hunter or Mr. Brown, are there any concerns with sharing that application material with me and so I could contact those folks? Uh, not sure what HR law says about.
No, I, I don't see any issue with it. It is, it would be a public record.
Yeah, all right, okay.
I don't, I don't have any problem with re-advertising, uh, but to send it to a specific group, that concerns me.
It's people who've already applied before. Uh, definitely make it public for everyone else, but these are folks that have taken an interest in the city already. It seems like wanting to prove to me.
Yeah, but you advert, you advertised it and you, these are the only people that applied and so what you're gonna do is say to this other group of people, we're not satisfied with the three that applied, we want you guys to consider. I mean, that's essentially what you're.
So we still have one opening after, uh, filling these three.
I see TJ though, isn't it? That's not.
No, there's still.
Okay.
There's, there are five total seats before.
So you're talking about the one vacant position. Okay, all right.
All right, recommendation is.
I move to reappoint Kurt Pearson, Judy Taylor and Edward Tlaskas to the City of Medden Planning Board for recognizing that qualification and its dedication to serving.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Mr. Si.
Now, the Almanz County ETJ position, um, just a brief review of these positions, uh, our voting positions on the city, uh, planning board, they are appointed at the pleasure of the counties, uh, that are represented on that board. We have two seats representing Almanz County, one representing Orange County. And then in contrast to the city planning board positions, we've had, uh, three applications for, uh, recommendation from the city council to the Almanz County Board of Commissioners, uh, to serve in this ETJ position. That includes the incumbent Larry Teague. Um, I understand that the county has received four applications for this position, so.
So they leave it up to us, which one we want?
Uh, yes, sir, they are requesting a recommendation from the city council, which has been the custom in the past.
Most pleasure to council.
How would, how would we do the recommendation if we hadn't seen the applications that they received directly?
Uh, we reached out to that applicant and, uh, they did not, uh, respond. We don't have an applicant, uh, request for, or an application for a recommendation from that applicant.
So they wouldn't normally consider those applications either?
Uh, I, I don't know. Uh, they, they serve, the, the county has, uh, the ability to appoint whomever they feel would be best for their interests on our ETJ, as an ETJ representative. It could be, um, someone of their own choosing, as I understand the law.
So we're making a recommendation, but it would almost be impossible for us to recommend someone for whom we don't have an application.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I'm making, I'm making a motion, we recommend Larry Teague.
We have a motion.
A second.
And a second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Could you go back one slide to the, the one more? Go back. Okay.
So we're just gonna hold open that fourth seat for now or re-advertise for, um, Mr. Vincent's seat on the planning board, is that my understanding?
We have the press release and the advertisement ready to go, be happy to begin putting it on a cycle until we receive qualified applications.
All right.
Thanks.
Is any other business coming for the council tonight?
We, thanks, Mr. Mayor, if you, please allow me. Uh, and please feel free to speak of, uh, if you have any inputs, I have a lot of commendations for those that attended the Fourth of July, it went off without a ditch, I'm not sure who else attended that, it was a phenomenal event, that Arts and Community Center, uh, Met and Police, I have no idea how you e-branded everyone so quickly from that area, that was phenomenal, like everyone else. Who else was actually involved? What other departments were involved?
Fire Department.
Fire, I think finance was involved.
Everybody.
Everybody, the whole team. It was fantastic, so thank you. Uh, Juneteenth, uh, I want to give big thanks to Johnson A&amp;E and the fire department showed up for that, it was a great event over there at Old Street Park. Farmers Market is doing an exceptional job right now. 200 people, did I hear that right, Mr. Davis? 200 people in this last Farmers Market. Two other quick little things, and I'd love to hear feedback from everyone. Uh, I have gotten a lot of good feedback from constituents. Uh, we are, we are a younger demographic here, working professionals, they love their kids, but they need a summer camp. I'm not saying we bring it up right now, but I'd love to see numbers for a summer camp that probably bring into budget next year. Um, I've been talking to the other municipalities, it sounds like there is a way to have, uh, is it debt zero revenue or no, no expense, no revenue? And Mr. Davis, uh, before 2019, I guess who was, uh, helping that program over there in Brown? That was yourself? I'd love to hear everyone's opinion about that, just to see numbers, I'm not proposing anything, but any issues with that? Any concerns?
We're in brimming full with this budget.
Yeah, cool. Uh, the last thing is as we expand as a city, uh, I would love to see AVSS have a report to bring it to us about how we're impacting schools. I know Dr. Thorpe has actually made that. They just did a, their own little census survey, it sounded like it started to wrap up, if you want to correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd love to see him and see how we're affecting, how we can work, I guess a little bit closer with the schools, at least understand how we're impacting that. Any issues with that?
I think, I think it may be best, it may be best to start out with our staff telling us or giving us a presentation on what they're doing as far as, uh, coordinating with the schools on development and stuff. I mean, you gotta meet with the school or?
Yes, sir, uh, the, um, the past, uh, planning director was charged by the county for providing a quarterly update. We provided Libby with that quarterly update based on all of the, um, approved developments and COs that were coming through. Uh, we no longer provide that quarterly update, but we include Dr. Thorpe and his staff on our TRC meetings and they are aware of all of the projects that are coming through TRC, including those that don't require public hearing, um, and, uh, and the additional homes and that'll, that they'll be needing to serve with their school system.
Why would we now go to the county instead of schools, the, the ABSF?
The, the county? So we were communicating directly with the county planning director before, um, and, but we no longer provide that quarterly report, it was, uh, a quarterly request went out to us and, uh, we no longer receive that request.
All right, anything else? If not, most, we will adjourn. I'm getting ready to ask for a motion. We're adjourned.